It is now six thirty-four. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Cuevas. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Pastor Dwight Dooley of Caverick Chapel South, favor leaders in a word of inspiration.
Please stand. The gentleman in the room will please remove your hats, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Councilmember Pat Kearney. You outdressed me again. I love that. The Spirit. God bless you. You know, I wanted to share this and it's always a pleasure to be in this chamber with you guys. I so enjoy you. And I read this verse many times during the Christmas season, but I just thought how fitting it is to share this with you. Where unto us, that's all of us, and these who are here also. Unto us, a Son is given, and a government shall be upon his shoulders. And his name shall be called Wonderful, Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, and Prince of Peace. As I considered this particular verse, I thought of you guys. Because you guys are awesome. You are the government in the city of Lawndale. And it's upon your shoulders. And you'll be called Wonderful, and you are. You're counselors to many people of this city. And you are the prince that brings peace into this community. Your heart, your thoughts, your words, your ability to minister to people, that's who you are. And all of that was given to this child that was born to us has been given to you. And it's a beautiful thing to share with you that. And so, Father, we're grateful and thankful for this council. Lord, each and every one of these members, they're really the ones that bring peace into the community of Lawndale. You've given them that ability to counsel those that come into this chamber. You try to minister and use them to bring peace between each and every person, that they would hear what's on their heart and mind. You have blessed them with the great ability to be that counselor, to help, to set a future for this city, to minister to each as they have need, to be able to hear what's on their hearts. Father, you have blessed them with much wisdom. Father, I pray that you continually pour out wisdom, knowledge, understanding, grace and peace. And Father, that they will consider everyone's heart in every direction that comes for the residents of this city are bringing to them issues, areas that might need changing, and help that they need. And this council delivers that to them. And so, we're thankful. And we praise you for assembling such a great, awesome group of men and women who look after your community and your children. We thank you for them. Now bless them and bring the peace that surpasses all understanding to them, their homes, their families, their children. And we pray in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Love you guys.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dooley, for those words of encouragement. Thank you for being here tonight. All right. Moving our agenda, we're now on our public safety report. We'll hear from the Sheriff's Department, our new captain, Captain Palamino. She's gonna give the public safety report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palamino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I'm here to present the public safety report for December 5th through December 18th. And so, I will begin by discussing our notable arrests and investigations for the last two weeks. The first one, deputies responded to a commercial establishment in the fourteen-nine-hundred block of Hawthorne Boulevard regarding a grand theft now call for service. The deputies learned several people entered the business and stole merchandise. The deputies, in conjunction with loss prevention personnel, located the suspects and the vehicle used in the crime. Three of the five suspects involved in the crime were arrested, and over $6,000 in stolen merchandise was recovered. The case will be investigated by the Los Angeles County Organized Retail Theft Task Force. Then on November twenty-ninth, a Sheriff's Department patrol vehicle was vandalized in a parking lot on Inglewood Avenue near the four-oh-five freeway. The deputy left his patrol vehicle and went on foot patrol in the area. When he returned, he saw the suspect running away from the patrol vehicle and discovered that one of the windows was shattered. Detective Ramirez and Detective Diaz identified the suspect, who was a known transient that lived around the four-oh-five freeway encampments. The suspect was arrested on December twelfth for attempted vehicle burglary and vandalism. And then I later learned that CHP was in the area with Caltrans workers at the time, clearing out the encampments when the crime occurred. And moving on to our traffic citations. Approximately twenty traffic citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, which included speeding and failure to stop at a stop sign. And then our motorcycle enforcement deputy also monitored motors on Hawthorne Boulevard and watched for individuals who failed to stop at red traffic signals, excuse me, traffic signals. And lastly, deputies assisted with traffic and crowd control at the community walk, which was sponsored by Metro and Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. Over two hundred people attended, and the event had no significant incidents that occurred. South Los Angeles Station, in conjunction with the Lawndale City Council, held its first annual toy giveaway in the city of Lawndale. The event took place in the parking lot at Lawndale High School, and over a thousand toys were distributed to approximately five hundred families. I would like to thank the Sentinel Valley Unified School District for allowing us to use the facility, as well as the City Council for supporting the event and the community. And I want to thank the City Council for facilitating the Coffee with the Cop event at Target last Wednesday. It was my absolute pleasure to engage with you, the city staff, and the community members that came out to that event. And I'm absolutely looking forward to my next one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions on the public safety report?
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
A shout-out to Detective Torres for putting it together. It was a fantastic event. A toy giveaway.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for that report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Now we are on oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would approach the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. You simply approach the podium once the person before you has concluded. Yes, sir.
I'm Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Lawndale. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the work by everybody to host County Supervisor Holly Mitchell's Green Line Community Walk last Saturday. I think the walk was intended more for the benefit of those who were new to the project, so I hope it helped them. Personally, I was disappointed by the Metro engineering staff when they did not know the ridership forecast for the two main train options, or sided the wrong number either in front of groups or when I spoke with them individually. And the forecast of Hawthorne Boulevard ridership over the row is thirty-five percent, as I've mentioned before. Of course, the Metro people had all the cost numbers handy, as always. And they seem, all seem to have forgotten the key performance metric is cost effectiveness, meaning cost per rider. So you need to remember cost and ridership information, not just cost. And Hawthorne Boulevard is the more effective project, having a lower cost per rider than the hybrid row. By the way, Holly Mitchell was one of the last people to leave the event, which I found impressive. I was not sure she would show up at all. Secondly, I appreciate the many things that Lawndale does right. At the bottom of the city's website homepage is a link to privacy. When I click the link, there's a privacy policy there. There's another South Bay city which will remain unnamed, where on their homepage, clicking on the privacy link just reloads the homepage. I told them about that several years ago, and they still haven't fixed it. So thank you for being better with all my sincerity.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. This is Holly Osborne from Redondo Beach. First, thank you and all your staff and the sheriffs for supporting the event this weekend. One thing I have concluded is that what is needed is a good history of the row in Lawndale. Metro people are not very knowledgeable based on DER statements like, quote, "These residences were constructed between the nineteen thirties and nineteen seventies." That was Section three point three. If Metro really thought that, then they were totally ignorant of the houses built in the nineteen eighties. And if they are ignorant now in 2023, then maybe they were that ignorant in nineteen ninety-three when they bought the row and did not realize that it narrowed from a hundred feet to seventy-five feet. Another thing, which I only really recently realized, was why these nineteen eighty houses were built so much later than the others. Based on conversations with longtime residents, there used to be incredible flooding in that area in the nineteen fifties and sixties. A flood control project completed in nineteen sixty-five controlled the flooding, and that is what enabled those houses to be built fifteen years later. But what impact would adding an LRT have on the row, on the drainage? I do not think that is even discussed. And does anyone have a picture of the flooding that occurred, then? That would be useful. I have shown that the pipelines generally reduce the width of the Lawndale Row by twelve to thirteen feet. Yet, Metro has shown drawings of the row in the narrow area that have maintenance areas of only eight feet or four feet, depending on the row configuration, non-trenched or trenched. These were on display at the Hundred-seventieth Street Station. When I asked, were the current pipelines going to be moved or stay where they are? I got conflicting answers or no answers, and basically told to, well, I was quieted. I do not believe that the diagrams in the appendix show these pipelines being moved. I know they are moved south of Artesia and at Artesia, but I am talking about One-seventieth to Artesia. If they are going to be moved and the drawings do not show it, then that is an increase in cost that has not been accounted for. And that brings up another question. Do any of these pipelines have long-term leases on that part of the row? I hope Lawndale can track that down. And I would like someone to schedule meetings with the pipeline people and ask these questions, as well as with BNSF. When I talked to BNSF project person on the phone and asked about the project and was it feasible, his reply was, "That's not my project, but I know they are having difficulty fitting it in." Okay. So again, thank you again to the Lawndale staff people who tracked down parcel maps for me. And I had discovered an old map that showed that Condon was on both sides of this row back in the sixties. And the people on the east side, when Condon was vacated around nineteen sixty-five, got their line. I've got a map if anybody wants it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Osborne. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thanks to the city clerk's office staff for responding to my request for the July fourth financial reports and fireworks sales. For as long as I've been attending council meetings regarding fireworks, the public has been told that selling fireworks is essential to the youth groups and organizations in Lawndale. Over the years, when reviewing the financials, it is clear that the money raised does not justify the cost of extra deputies or jeopardizing the health and property of residents. The financial reports for the two eligible organizations selling fireworks this past July fourth were due by November thirtieth. The reports should confirm that the money received from fireworks sales is spent in accordance with city guidelines. Once again, the fireworks manufacturer is a big winner with total sales of two hundred seventeen thousand five hundred fifteen. The two organizations' fireworks sales netted eighty-two thousand four seventy-nine, only thirty-eight percent of those sales. This means sixty-two percent of the sixty-two percent of the funds go to the manufacturer, with no requirement that these funds benefit anyone other than their profit margin. Only fifty percent of the income received by the organizations is required to be returned to the youth groups in non-profits in Lawndale. So while the manufacturers receive two hundred seventeen thousand five hundred fifteen in sales, only a little over forty-one thousand is required to be spent for the benefits of the community. The cost to the city of keeping residents safe is not a factored cost for these organizations. A review of the financial report presents some interesting observations. One of the organizations submitted the Part B form past the required deadline. A late filing is what disqualified the Rotary Club from selling fireworks last year. The receipts from both of the organizations showed some questionable expenditures. Spending over seven thousand dollars for a pre-owned 2014 golf cart might not have been the most essential use of these funds. One organization donated to several other nonprofits, including three thousand to an organization with a Redondo Beach mailing address with its registered owner, its private residence headquarters in the city of Hawthorne. This would not qualify as donating to a charitable project within the city as required. Payments to Phantom Fireworks for an event also qualifies as a justifiable receipt. Some of the expenditures look like last-minute attempts to meet the requirements, with one Lawndale church donating fifty-four hundred dollars in November to another Lawndale church. Hopefully, the city finance department will review the receipts from both organizations in detail. Several organizations failed the previous audit and were not allowed to sell fireworks in 2023. These organizations have demonstrated their continued success without the sale of fireworks. In a city of about thirty-two thousand, the sale of fireworks only benefits a few hundred, but it takes the toll of the majority of us, who have to suffer through the illegal bombardment. Is it a time that these organizations chose more reasonable and accountable methods of fundraising that do not impact all city residents? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. With that, we will close public comment. And we'll bring up to the diocese for any comments. Let's hear from Councilwoman Hoffman Gorman.
Thank you to everybody that came out tonight to be with us here at council meeting. And also, thank you to those who came up to speak with us. I'm gonna start with Mr. Haller. Your compliment about the city website. We have really worked hard in the last couple of years to update our website so that it is better suited. So I appreciate that compliment. And as I'm sure that the staff is and my colleagues to my right, that was, I'm glad that you noticed. As far as the community walk went, I was disappointed as well. And later in this meeting, I will voice my own take on that community walk. Dr. Osborne, you asked about photos of that area. I will personally reach out. We have someone in the city by the name of Jim Osborne. Typical, kind of like your name, not a relative, that if anybody would have those type of photos, I'm suspicious maybe he might. So I will reach out to him and find out if he does have anything like that for your benefit. Okay? And again, as far as the community walk goes, I will speak myself later regarding that. Randall, thank you for the information on fireworks and your questions. I would ask Sean or maybe Finance or someone if you wanted to take any of the questions or concerns that he might have.
Staff's still looking over the applications. I'll let Haron detail if he has any more details of where we're at on the audit for the fireworks.
Not too much right now, really. We're just going over the paperwork, seeing what's in there. So we'll review and get back to you guys on that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Let's hear from Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Councilwoman Gorman said, also, I'll just say, thank for the people who came out and spoke tonight. I'll pass it on to my colleagues.
Okay. Councilwoman Bernadette, go ahead.
Thanks to everybody that came out. Fortunately, I wasn't able to make the community walk. I had a prior commitment from months ago. But I did want to also say a thank you to staff, because the permit for the event came in last minute. So I want to thank staff for processing it so quickly to make sure that it happened. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Madam Protem Cuevas?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Everybody else already, actually Rhonda said it all. But thank you.
I too want to thank everyone who came out, who spoke. I do want to highlight the ideal of making sure that we review the accounting of the fireworks organizations. As Mr. Randall had mentioned, that we make sure that those are appropriately spent. If it's true on one of the items that he mentioned, that it appears as if it profited an organization outside of the city, I don't think that is the intent of allowing for fireworks. So if we can take a close examination of that, I would appreciate that. Other than that, I want to thank everyone for coming out and those who spoke. Okay. With that, we will close public comments and comments from the council, and we move our agenda. We are now on item F, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. This is a motion for, wait a minute, give me one second. Okay. I just realized that I should have also opened the meeting for the Redevelopment Successor Agency as well. Would that be appropriate, Madam City Clerk? So let's open up the Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting at this time as well, because we have redevelopment, success or agency item on the agenda as well, which is number four and five. So just so everyone be aware, this item for the consent calendar would be for the city council, and then we have the redevelopment agency, success or agency four and five. So the motion still stands. Motion's been made by Cuevas and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motions? Okay. Will the council and agency please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on the agenda is item six of public hearing, concerning consideration and adoption of the comprehensive update to the city's general plan. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and the public. This item is case number twenty-three nineteen, consideration and adoption of a comprehensive update to the city's general plan 2045, and adoption of an associated environmental impact report. This item was continued from last December fourth city council meeting to allow council additional time to review the project. We have the Noble Planning Group, which is the consultant that helped put together this project, to answer any questions you may have. And staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and that you approve the resolutions twenty-three twelve dash forty-nine, certifying final environmental impact report, and twenty-three dash zero four eight, approving the general plan 2045 comprehensive update. And staff is available for any questions, as well as the consultant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the staff before opening the public hearing? Not the staff, the council, before we open the public hearing? Okay. This is a continuation of a public hearing that we started at the last council meeting. So those who provided comments on that meeting, this is a continuation. Those comments will stand. Hearing none. No comments from the council. Okay. It is now six fifty-eight. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to provide comments or testimony in this public hearing? You may do so at this time. Okay. Seeing none. It is now six fifty-eight. The public hearing is now closed. Let's bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council, deliberations from the council.
I'd just like to thank staff. I know you do a lot of work that goes into this. I want to thank you for always keeping us updated. You know, it's a little hard to swallow with regards to some of the housing requirements that we face, but you know, it is what it is. So just want to say thank you.
Yeah. And I would say that, yes, this is, the staff did put a lot of time into this item, particularly because a lot of the research and the public outreach was conducted during COVID. So we had to do an extraordinary amount of public outreach to get the level of participation that we needed to make sure that, you know, the public was fully aware that we were anticipating making these changes, modifications, I should say, to the general plan. So I want to thank the staff for their hard work and due diligence on this. We had meetings in person, as well as online, what have you, and I want to thank you guys for that. And with that, that's all I have. I don't have anything in particular.
If there's nothing, I would like to motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. So it's a motion to approve that we approved the staff recommendation by Cuevas and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. But any discussions on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item seven, selection of project for fiscal year 2024-25 for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Let's have the staff report. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the selection of projects for the Community Development Block Grant for the upcoming twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, fiftieth program, year of the Community Development Block Grant. We have received a two hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and four dollar estimate from LAGDA, the Los Angeles County Development Authority, with funds to be used for five to ten percent for senior activities and the rest to be used for public surveys. So they're to be used for the redevelopment of streets. So fifteen percent, so around forty thousand dollars, will be going to senior activities nutrition program. And the rest will be allocated to the streets proposed in the staff report. I do want to make a correction of one of the streets. One's of any first. It's not large to Freeman. It's Hawthorne to Gravilia. And I did confirm this with the Public Works Department. However, the numbers are correct and the PCI is correct. So with that said, staff recommends that you conduct a public hearing and adopt the 2024 and 2025 budget for the CDVG program and adopt resolution CC twenty-three twelve forty-seven, approving the city's participation in the fiscal year 2024-2025 CDVG program. And staff is available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's a hearing. No, no questions, but a comment. Should I wait for that?
Yeah. Any questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none. It is now seven oh two. The public hearing is now open. Let's have some discussion from the council. Well, let's do this first. Let me ask if there's anybody in the audience willing to provide any testimony or comments on this, in this matter. Okay. Seeing none. Let's bring up the council, any discussions.
Um, it was just-
Let me close the public hearing first. Okay. It is now seven oh two, and the public hearing is now closed. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now I can see. So I just wanted a really quick, there was a meeting we had, I think it might have been a year or so ago. I can't remember the exact date. But we talked about PCI and our street conditions, and we had a really good score. So this is one of the funds in which we are able to get that higher score. And this is, because we did speak about where to get the funding, and this is one of the avenues that we use to get those streets up to par. So just wanted to mention that.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
How did we determine what streets to work on? And when was the last time we did work on these streets?
We have a pavement management report that spells out all the PCIs for all the streets within the city. And so for last year, this year, and the next year, we have streets with the lowest PCI scores that we start with. And by twenty-four, twenty-five, we've gotten to the rate that they are at. So we try to get to the lowest scores first, so that we can upgrade all the streets. And then eventually, we'll have a slurry seal program that will help keep them all within a top PCI score. So it's all with the pavement management report.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I know you mentioned the senior activity program, where there's about forty thousand would be used to continue the nutrition program. Does that forty thousand represent, what, does that forty thousand represent a hundred percent of the fifteen percent of senior activities?
So it would be for fifteen percent of the total, which is the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That would be that percentage, forty thousand.
Okay. And I'm asking that because I'm wondering if, because you know, we have like a senior, senior club. They may not call themselves a club, but they go on senior trips or what have you. Travel club, that's the word I was looking for. Is there, they qualify for funding in- Is there, they qualify for funding in this program?
My understanding, my understanding is that it's for senior meals only.
Just meals?
I could ask our consultant, Michael Baker, to-
Mr. Mayor, council, it's not, the senior travel program is not permitted under the community development block grant.
No. Okay, just wondering.
Thank you.
Okay, that's my only question for now. Any other questions?
You just brought up something I just thought of. How do we come up with $40,000 for senior meals? Is that an average, or is that based on this year? How do we come up with this?
So LAGDA allocates a certain amount that you can use for certain items. So 15% is the maximum they allow for this year for senior activities.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we accept the staff recommendation and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion?
With the changes with the 171st Street?
Yes, yes, with those technical changes, yes. Any discussion? If not, with the council, please vote.
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item under administration, item eight, an update on contracts with Motorola Solutions.
Mr. Mayor, we have a citizen that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for reminding me. Let's hear from the public. Any member of the public who wants to speak on this item at this time may do so at this Update on the contract with Motorola Solutions.
I am Ray Haller, homeowner in Southwest Lawndale. My intention is for everybody to understand the breadth of access to Lawndale ALPR data so that proper oversight can occur as part of the metrics and audits you will need to evaluate the effectiveness of the ALPR program. I'm now going to read from the Los Angeles County's Automated License Plate Recognition ALPR Privacy Policy, which I just found today. Section two, persons authorized to use or access ALPR technology slash data. In paragraph two, quote, sworn personnel or authorized civilian personnel role-based such as crime analyst will have general user access to the LASD ALPR database as appropriate to query information. In paragraph three, again, sworn personnel or authorized civilian personnel role-based of the Advanced Surveillance and Protection Unit ASAP or Sheriff's Data Network, SDN Unit, will have administrative user access to the LASD ALPR database as appropriate to control and then diesel follow. So the idea that only sworn enforcement, law enforcement personnel have access to the ALPR data is incomplete because, quote, authorized civilian personnel, unquote, also have access. It's right in the sheriff's privacy policy to their credit. For perspective, how many people have access? First, I understood Deputy Samuel Paul to say that all the other, that all the Lawndale ARP data would be combined with all the other data collected by LASD. So I infer that the entire LASD database can be accessed by any LASD sheriff approved to look at the data, for example, from Lancaster to Malibu, San Dimas, to Lomita. In 2019, the California State Auditor performed an audit of ALPR programs of law enforcement entities in California. In survey question 14, they asked, quote, "How many department personnel have access to ALPR data?" LASD's answer was 849. Unclear to me whether that includes, would include contractor personnel like Vigilant or Motorola, but 849. But it's more than that. Previous representations, previous presentations here have reported that the LASD has MOUs with other law enforcement entities to share ALPR data. I infer that means more people with access to the entire LASD ALPR database, including Lawndale data. I found out today that number is 55 departments. So the breadth of access is certainly much broader than I imagined, and I hope you will work with the LASD for proper oversight of access to protect our privacy. Now regarding crime ALPR success data, Mr. Reyes relayed data from Sergeant Smith, which I have not processed yet, but may return with later. And I wanted to say, in the Manhattan Beach privacy policy, trained parking and animal control officers have access. So once again, Lawndale is better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Yes, ma'am.
Resident, I believe when he's talking about civilians, I believe they have to go through a background just like officers and take lie detector tests and go through a lot of things. You're just not hiring just anybody. They're also held to a different standard, not like DMV people that are able to hand out your, all sorts of things, when they did, I think, a sting on DMV people that were given out all sorts of information on people. But when you work in law enforcement, because I have a friend in there, they have to go through a background too, just like officers do, and have to take a lie detector test. So I'm not buying that. I'm not buying that, I don't know why an animal control and parking would have ALPR hits, and they're, it's strictly for officers and probably like, say, a front desk person or whatever. Again, it's not just anybody. You've got to be able to get into law enforcement. It's just not that, you know, easy to say, here, here's some license plates now. It's not like that at all. So I'm just not buying into all his stuff. I get that, you know, Sheriff's is a big, you know, place, and so is LAPD. There's a lot of bigger agencies out there than, you know, in our little Lawndale area, but still, I still think it's a great program, and I'm gonna, you know, stick with it and fight for it. I think we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I had a few very practical questions to begin with. Wanted to know what the schedule of implementation would be, how soon will these be up and running? And I think once they are, the city's going to expect weekly or monthly reports on what they found, you know, how many stolen cars they've found. I've seen on crime mapping, there's a lot of stolen cars now in Lawndale that are showing up. So is, we assure results from that. And the question too, the state did an audit of, I think it was Fresno and two other agencies in 2020, and found a lot of deficiencies on privacy, which hopefully they resolve by now. But I wondered, does the sheriff do an annual audit of their program? Who uses it? Has there been any abuse of that system? The other thing about privacy that's come up is the length of retention of the records. The sheriff's department, and my understanding is Lawndale cannot have a separate program, so we go with whether the sheriff's department has. But the sheriff's department's length of retention is five years, from what I understand. A lot of agencies go for one year, and there's a bill going through the state that would restrict it to 30 to 60 days. So the length of retention becomes, becomes an important factor, too. Lastly, at the end of October, the state city attorney said that Lawndale, that agencies that use the system can no longer share records outside of the state. They can't share it to the federal government, they can't share it to any other state offices. So hopefully the sheriff's department is complying with that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring it back to the diocese for discussion on this item. Let me get my agenda. Okay. Anyone wants to speak on this item or want to add anything to this item?
I'll be more than happy to.
Yes, ma'am.
First off, I would ask, is, I see our experts from the sheriff's department are here, and maybe they would like to come up and address some of the issues that were just brought up by our speakers, and then maybe I can comment after that.
I'm Sergeant Chi, this is Deputy Sam Paul. Yeah, we are the department's subject matter experts on ALPR. I think, you know, most of the issue that were brought up, from what I heard, unless I misinterpreted, is surrounding this perceived access by civilians. Now, while it's true the department, you know, we do have civilian employees, but really the only civilians that have access to our, you know, ALPR database are crime analysts, and they're researching crime statistics, they're, you know, working active cases with detectives. So it's not like any civilian has access. It's mostly the crime analysts who are the civilians that he's referring to, and sworn. And even sworn, just because you're sworn, doesn't mean, doesn't mean you automatically get access. There's like 9,000 sworn on the sheriff's department, and there's what, maybe 1,000, 1,500 that actually have access. Our policy actually requires that the unit commander of where the deputy works to request permission for the captain or unit commander to authorize access before he gets access. So it's a very controlled, you know, very restricted database. And as far as outside civilians, I mean, if the mayor, if you yourself wanted access, we would say no, unless you had a legitimate law enforcement reason. So, you know, I think that that's, I hope that addresses the civilian access issue. Were there, was there something else that I missed?
So then if I understood correctly, that meant that if an officer was accessing the system, you're going to be time stamped as well with your name and how long you spent on it?
Everything's logged.
And you have to have the right clearance to even get to that point, correct? But it is going to be somehow monitored within the system that you were there.
Correct, it is logged. Everything is logged. And we also do audits. Our unit does audits, periodic audits. Just, you know, not, not every single log on, but, you know, we'll randomly select, you know, we'll look at all the people that have logged on, and if they're missing a reason, we'll contact them and say, hey, look, you have to put in either a file number or tag number or a reason why you accessed the database. So yeah, we do that auditing, and everything is tracked and logged.
And then can you also address the other resident's concern pertaining to the longevity of, how long is the information held? The five years and what?
Right, our department's policy is five years of retention, yes.
And do you see that that's going to be changing anytime soon to a lesser?
Well, I mean, it's been challenged by the ACLU and by the Electronics, you know, Frontier Foundation, and we survived the challenge. So it's, it's been five years for some time. You know, there could be future challenges, or it could be legislation from Sacramento. It's hard to say. But we don't have plans to change that unless there's compelling reason to.
Thank you.
Let's hear from Councilwoman Swor.
Could you touch on the comment about other agencies accessing it and how we control that data, or what control we have over that?
Yeah, we, we do share with other California law enforcement agencies. We share with Torrance, I think we share with a bunch of other local agencies. They have to sign our MOU before we, before we do that sharing, and it has to be signed by their chief of police. So our MOU basically outlines our policy, and, you know, our policy pretty much is in adherence to SB 34. So, you know, essentially, the other agency is promising to adhere by our ALPR rules before we share the data with them. So, and we don't share with any outside or out-of-state agencies at this point, nor any federal agencies at this point.
And then they're also subject to the retention period as well, for, like, in terms of destroying whatever we?
Well, our data is subject to our retention, so, you know, our data is scrubbed after five years. You know, other agencies, they have their own retention periods, so it's kind of, depends on them how long they keep their data.
So like, I guess, trying to understand, like, if we give them, like, you know, say it's like a document, we email it or give it to them, I don't know how it's accessed, or whether they're able to log on to the system and see it, or do we actually, like, you know?
Well, they, they log on to the same database that we log on to, and the data resides in the database.
Okay.
And, you know, after five years, our data goes away. Of course, if they downloaded it, if, you know, if they're working a case, or if there's an active case, they can always, you know, take a snapshot of that data and keep it for whatever they need it for. But as far as accessing it, we, you know, our data stays there for five years, and then it, and then it goes away.
So like, in the case of if they downloaded it, would they be subject to our retention period of, hey, we gave it to you, you have to erase it after five years?
Well, in theory, yes, because they signed our MOU, but we have no way of, you know, testing that, if you will. We can only audit our people. Yeah, so, but in theory, yes, if they sign the MOU.
Yes, ma'am.
If we request a bi-monthly report of who has been accessing our data, are we able to get a report or why the data was accessed?
We'll have to look into that. Because a lot of these cases are sensitive, so we'll have to look into that before we can say yes on that.
Well, not, not to tell us about the cases, but let's say 25 deputies that were authorized went into the, and grabbed data or looked at the data. So the usage of the system, and then if there were results, positive results by accessing the data.
Just remember, the audits that we do are department-wide and data sharing audits together. So your audits are not going to be isolated to just your system, if you will. Your system is going to become part of a very large net, so just as long as you're okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, most certainly, we can give you, like, general statistics.
Yeah.
And also, just to kind of plug this technology, I'm sure, you know, we're all aware of the benefits, but, you know, there's been two really recent, I guess, news stories that just popped up over the weekend, just a couple days ago. There was that road rage incident where a four-year-old was, was killed, and that, the suspects were caught using ALPR technology. That was up in Lancaster. And a couple weeks ago, there was a string of serial murders with the transients who were being killed, and also it was linked to another murder in San Dimas where a county employee was killed. The suspect was also, for that series of murders, was also caught with ALPR technology. So this technology has been in the news recently, and it's, it's a very powerful tool for law enforcement, just to kind of throw that plug.
In my case, I do like the technology, but I also want to answer the questions, or I would want you guys to answer the questions of the residents, because, yes, it's helping, but at the same time, you never know what could happen if it falls in the wrong hands.
Absolutely. One of the key things to always keep in mind about license plate recognition technology is that we are essentially taking photos of license plates. A license plate does not identify a person unless secondary actions are taken to try to identify someone. So in general, it's just a photograph and a, and OCR, an optical character recognition that's gleaned from the license plate that's recorded. We don't know who it is, we don't know the registered owner, we don't know anything other than that license plate went through this camera, and that's it. We always have to take secondary actions to try to identify. People use other people's cars, people put coal plates on cars, people do all sorts of things before we can truly identify somebody. So there is, just innately, there is some, a little bit of a barrier between knowing who is driving what. So that in itself should be comforting to people if you're, if we don't really know who any, well, we don't know who is driving that car without taking an investigative action to try to figure it out.
Right. And also another thing to keep in mind, though, is that data, like Sam said, doesn't include any personal identifying information. But also, the data is dormant. It's sort of, it's just sitting in the database until a detective or a crime analyst or somebody has a reason to look at, okay, who drove through this intersection in Lancaster at this date and time. So unless there's a reason for someone to look at that data, the data is dormant, and it's not accessible by just anybody, as we've discussed.
So it's, it's taking a picture of the license plate, but if the license plate is stolen, how do you figure out which car drove through there? If it was a Mazda instead of a Toyota? If it was a Mazda instead of a Toyota?
Well, again, you know, unless there's a, a hit or a reason to, you know, to, for a detective or, or someone to do follow-up work or, you know, in, in the event when there is a hit, there would be an alert sent out to a patrol deputy and the patrol deputy would do a, you know, some investigation, maybe do a traffic stop and, and run the plate into his, you know, CAD and see, oh, well, that plate doesn't match up to the car, right? But, but until that happens, there's, the system doesn't know, right, that the plate doesn't belong to this car. Maybe it's a Honda instead of a Cam or instead of a Toyota, something like that.
Unless it's reported, then all reported stolen license plates and vehicles, they're entered into a database that we use to alert. Yes, that's, it's, not sure if that's what you're looking for, yeah, okay.
Is it possible to be able to pull those positive hits that we get through the city of Longdale so that it could end up in our reports that the captains gives us at council meeting? That would probably be a, a real positive thing to our residents if we can know that number. Just as I ask from our fire department for the nurse practitioner numbers on how many that we're helping keep out of the emergency room, that might also be something that the community might find some satisfaction in having in, in knowing that it's a money roll spent and then they can see it.
If I can speak to that, Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman, Sergeant Smith and I have already discussed that. Once the cameras are in play, we will include regular reports on the success of the automatic license plate recognition cameras, the number of alerts versus the number of arrests made.
That's perfect.
And just speak to some of what Deputy Paul and Sergeant She were saying. The retention rates, they are five years. They, if, you know, if they were shorter, is, once you pop on the, if you're doing the same route every day, driving to or from work and you're popping on the camera, yes, it might have perjured from last week, but you've made another hit, so you're continuously in the system anyway. So even shortening the retention period doesn't necessarily mean your vehicle's ever going to be purged from the system. But as Sergeant She outlined, it is a dormant system. If no one's looking for your vehicle and if you haven't done anything wrong, there's no reason that anyone's going to look for your vehicle. And, and by the way, as, as I've stated, there is no personal information given by these automatic license plate readers. They still must be cross-referenced with the DMV CLIT system. And that system, by the way, has every vehicle in, in California registered in there, literally a million vehicles. So the fact that only eight hundred and fifty people have access to these systems is actually a very reassuring number. I don't think that speaks to any sort of privacy issues whatsoever. The number of people who have access to DMV records, however, does include my staff, my parking officers, parking officers throughout every city in California. Plates are run by every agency, law enforcement agency on every traffic stop. So for the safety of the public and for the safety of police officers, the first thing they do when they pull someone over in a traffic stop is run the plate so they know exactly who they're dealing with. So any privacy that people are worried about, this system only isn't accessible by dedicated and allowed officers who then still have to cross-reference it with the DMV system. So to your point, like, if there's a stolen license plate, if the person had their plate stolen and they filled out a police report, once the deputies begin the investigation, they'll know that that license plate is stolen and that's not going to be an accurate hit. In fact, they're going to compare that with the photo of the vehicle. If the license plate says it's a Ford Ranger and they run the plate and it comes back to a Chevy, whatever, they're going to know that, hey, this is the stolen plate, this is not, we're not looking for Mayor Pro Tem Cuevas, this is not, this is the plate that was stolen from her car. So again, in terms of retention rate, in terms of privacy issues, these really don't come into play because all the information that the deputies are accessing is from the DMV system that we have already all given our information to. And, and the information that is attached to the license plate is not credit card information. It's nothing other than your basic information, your address, your name and your vehicle information.
I have one question, actually kind of scenario, to see if you have policies against the sworn officers or civilians, authorized civilians. Just if they, what happens if someone just decides, you know, it's, it's Tuesday, I got some free time, let me just surf the, the system to, to see what I can come up with. I see one car with a, with a license plate, let me run that and see if it's a, anything I need to know about that one. No, let me see this one, just spot checking or what have you, is there a system? Or is that allowable or what have you? Or how do you, and if not, what's the policy against such?
Well, I, I think our policy is you need a reason to be, you know, like, reading or researching plates if it's a crime analyst or even if it's sworn. We, we have to, you know, I think it's part of the interface where you have to put in on the form, you know, you've got to put in the license number, obviously, or the date and time and the location, but you also have to put in a reason, you know, what is the reason you're looking at these plates? You know, are you investigating a crime? Is it an active case? You know, what, what's the reason that you're looking through the database for, for plates? So, and, you know, and, and if there isn't a good reason, if we catch it in our audit, we'll, we'll contact that deputy and have them correct that. So I guess that, in that scenario, if someone's just doing it for shits and giggles, they, they would have to, I guess, create a reason, you know, or falsify a reason. But then, you know, I mean, obviously, if you're caught doing that, you would.
Now, can you see other plates that's already entered into the database? On a des scenario, you would have a plate in mind, you saw one on the street or whatever, you wrote it, wrote it down or whatever, right? But can you go into the database and you see the list of, of plates? And then you run whatever diagnostic you do on that plate?
Searches can be done in multiple different ways, that is one way.
But you need a reason to do that, you can't just decide, I'm doing proactive, you know, crime enforcement, so I'm going to just look at all these plates because I have some free time.
Just to log in and look at license plates requires a reason.
Yeah.
You can't just surf the internet, so to speak, on there, it doesn't work that way. You know, it, it's a lot more restrictive than accessing the internet, so to speak.
Yeah, you, you need a reason to even look at, you know, the camera on Hawthorne and, you know, Marine, for instance. I want to see, you know, the two hundred cars that drove through this hour. Why, why are you looking at the two hundred cars, right? Even to, to get to that point, you need to put in for, you need to have a reason. So it, it is fairly restrictive that way.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you as well. I appreciate you coming and relieving some of the concerns that are had here in the city. So I appreciate the time that you have taken to come.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we have one more question for you.
Sorry, I forgot, because someone asked about the implementation of it, which might be a staff. And so can you speak to the timeline for when we can expect these up and running?
Yeah, we, we're ready to go, we just need signatures from the mayor and city council, I'm sorry, the mayor and Sean. And then we can, we can write them a check and get them ordered. They do have to be built, but Sergeant Smith has already done meetings with crime analysts and detectives to look at best placements for, and most effective places for public safety. So that step has already been taken. They are, they are portable, so we can always change that or the serge can change that if they feel they're not getting the proper hits. But yeah, it can, it can be implemented right away.
But like, time-wise, like months or half a year?
Well, we've got to, we've got to sign the check and pay them first, but then after that. I, I don't have a Motorola representative here, some of these things do have to be built specifically for us. I can have an answer through Sean as soon as I can speak to him Motorola. But the first step is we have to pay them.
Yeah, it would just be good so that residents don't think they're like, you know, maybe like some kind of like a notification, hey, these are going up, this is what these are about. Otherwise, they might think they're like red light cameras or something.
Of course, and then just for the, for everyone's peace of mind, these cameras do not have the capability to issue citations for red lights, running stops and things like that. They're only, only taking pictures of license plates. And, and for the, for the mayor's example, if someone did want to just surf license plates, they'd only be looking at pictures of license plates, they would still need to cross-reference those with the DMV CLIT system. So there, it's, that's not the, the only step, that's just a picture of a license plate.
Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerned in?
Well, I've been making motion to go with option two and sign the contract and get the ball rolling.
I'll second it.
So the motion's been made by Kearney that we go with option two and seconded by Councilwoman Gorman-Hoffman. Right?
Hoffman-Gorman, whatever.
Is there any discussion on, on the motion? Seeing them with the council, please vote.
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next item, item nine, federal grant agreement for the Youth Development Center project.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So we're here to address the federal grant agreement for the Youth Development Center project. This is really good news and the end goal in this is to get this contract signed and get it back to HUD. But I want to just give you folks a, a few minutes of an update as what is this contract going to do for us? In two thou, June two thousand twenty-three, the city received a grant award letter from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for a multi-use building. This is the fourth pot of money that we'll have for the project. The grant award is in the amount of four thou, four million dollars and will be funded as part, was funded as part of the Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand twenty-three. And with Ms. Congresswoman Waters' help, we were able to get this. So HUD is simply the clearinghouse. When the feds get money and the states get money, they just farm it out to different federal agencies to be the administrator, so to speak. So we're working with HUD just to administer the grant, they'll eventually provide the money to us, that's why we're talking about HUD. All the attachments in the, in your council packet, once the contract is signed, they'll be packaged and sent off to HUD and then we should be able to get our money. Typically, with my experience with grants, that after the contract is signed and sent in, usually takes about a month or two for us to get a final contract like we did with the state contract several months ago. Now, if you go to, go to page two and look at the table here, I can kind of explain what this money's going to do for us. Right now, we have four pots of money. We have L.A. County Measure A Technical Assistant funding, that's going to get us through Phase One, which is going to be the design. The RFP for the design will go out tomorrow, it's going to go out to about fourteen firms. And then it's going to be due back on January seventeenth. At that time, we'll select a vendor and we'll move forward with the design. So we're targeting a design to happen probably in late February, March and April. And I'd like to have this phase concluded by mid-April and then come to you folks with a few sets of designs. And you guys will see what's happening along the way. And then hopefully, we can get council to approve a design for the Youth Development Center, probably second meeting in April, that's what I'm targeting it for right now. The second pot of money we have is from the state funding from the California Natural Resources Agency. That's another clearinghouse, the state farms all this money out to the different state departments. We've already secured that money, it's, that's good. That money needs to be encumbered by March two thousand twenty-six. So once we start demolition and, and early construction, that money will go fast. So we'll have no problem encumbering that money by March two thousand twenty-six. The third pot of money we have is L.A. County Measure A Annual allocations. As I reported to you folks before, this money builds by about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars per year. So this is the amount we'll have in, in two thousand twenty-five. And that's going to be the third pot of money, that's going to be used for probably early midpoint construction. And then this is the fourth pot of money. Again, HUD is the administrator, this is a federal grant for four million dollars, this money is unsecured. So the goal here is to get this contract fully executed and to package up the, the attachments and then send that off to HUD. And like I said before, it'll probably take a month or two before we have a final contract. Then we'll have all of our money secured. So just, just one point about the first pot of money, that's, can only be used for design planning and architectural, so I can't burn, we probably won't be able to burn all that money out just in this phase. I anticipate we might use half of that for the Phase One Design Planning and Architectural Services. So if we eliminate that money, we're looking at nine million five hundred dollars we have secured for this project. What we have, what we envision the project to be right now, just a really basic, really basic explanation here, but the, the designers and the architectural people will sort this out and give us three sets of designs and we'll decide which one we want to do, is we're, if the money will last, we're hoping to do a construction of an approximate sixteen thousand square foot two-level building with the Youth Development Center on Level One and Municipal Services and Cable Department on Level Two. Construction of a parking lot, of course, we need a parking lot to support that building. And then also, we want to mix in a outdoor skate park, possibly an indoor skate park, but more than likely an outdoor skate park because indoor facilities are really, really expensive. I'm not sure if we'll have enough money for that, but we're going to look at both options and see which we can do. So those are the three basic elements and we have a number of ideas on where the eventual design would be. The skate park could be in the middle, the, the Youth Development Center could be on the east side and then the parking lot could be on the west side adjacent to Gravilla, so we'll have a really nice design here. We're going to use the existing footprint where the Municipal Services Department building is right now. From Gravilla to Buren, it's about a sixty-three thousand square foot lot right now. We are going to go searching for another part of money and I'll be working on this grant agreement, not agreement, but this grant application in the next couple of weeks, it's due in mid-January. This is an LCWF, which is, where did I put that here? This is Land, Land Water Conservation Fund, okay? It's just an offshoot of another grant that we got, another grant that we got, the first pot of money we got for four million dollars from the state, this is an offshoot of this. This is a competitive grant, these are very difficult to get because you're going up against probably hundreds of other agencies in, in the United States. But I think we'll have a good shot because we are considered an economic disadvantaged urban community. We'll score high on that and we also qualify being a city with in excess of thirty thousand residents. So we're, we're just barely above thirty thousand, I think we'll score high on that. This is a match grant, so basically what we would do here is we would use L.A. County funding to Measure A funding to leverage against this, against this. So if we wanted to ask for, let's say hypothetically, we wanted a six thousand square foot skate park, skate parks are relatively cheap, about a hundred dollars per square foot, we would ask for three hundred thousand dollars and then match it for, with L.A. County funds. So if we're lucky enough to get one of these grants, again, we'll score very high. We have great chances of getting this. It's going to be, the match money's going to stay with us because we're going to spend it on our project anyways. It's almost like getting another pot of free money. So we'll discuss with Sean a little deeper on, you know, what type of skate park we want, but I think this property will be able to support probably a six thousand square foot skate park. So we will try to land that grant, we'll probably hear about that in the summer. These grants are not fast-moving, but we are going to apply for that. And that's everything in a nutshell, so this is great news. In terms of legal review, Mr. Murphy's reviewed the no-change contract. The feds won't let us change even a letter or a period or a comma in the contract, it's all PDF. So he's reviewed that. There'll be basically no fiscal impact to the city because all this, all this money is, they're non-city dollars. Each of the four buckets of money that we have right now, and hopefully we'll get a fifth, they're all non-city dollars, meaning not from the general fund. I mean, Measure A funds, they're city dollars, they're considered local funds, but they're not from our, our general fund. Staff's recommendation is as follows. Number one, approve the attached FY two thousand twenty-three Community Project Funding Grant Agreement, number B dash two-three dash, dash CP, dash CA, dash zero-two-five-seven, and authorize the city manager to sign the funding agreement between the city of Longdale and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. That's the number one option that we would suggest that you guys exercise tonight. And number two, always to provide further direction. So that concludes my report and I'll be happy to answer any questions if there's something I didn't cover or you folks are interested in.
Thank you for that report, are there any comments? I have a comment.
Quick question, if, if we approve this, when would the project start? Demolition and all that, twenty twenty-four or are we waiting until twenty-five?
The timeline we're looking, looking at right now is to complete Phase One, which is designed by April, okay? And obviously with grant money and all kinds of things going on, you could have unforeseen things that happen, things that just pop up and, you know, when you start breaking ground, you find even crazier stuff. So if we can finish that by April, what we want to do is we want to start working on a construction management contract. So we have a very short period between Phase One and Phase Two. And then we could break ground in May, possibly, possibly in May or June. And if we have the construction contract lined up and just ready to go, we could be, we could, we could break ground, not groundbreaking, but actually break ground and start demolition in the summer, maybe June or July. And that's, that's not real optimistic, that's not pushing it, that's a real, a very realistic timeframe. And then I would say that demolition and early construction, that four million dollars will probably last us, you know, money can go quick. Once construction starts, you know, I'm thinking we could probably start actually getting into the building, maybe the end of two thousand twenty-four. So the answer to your question is going to be, yes, we'll break ground in two thousand twenty-four. Early, early to mid- Early, early to mid-2024. We don't want to be, break ground in September, October, then we're falling behind. So personally, those are my goals with the project. Get the design done, do a groundbreaking, and then get into the construction part of it.
So we're looking at an opening sometime summer of twenty-five if all goes well, or at the end of twenty-five?
I'm going to say, uh, early 2027, possibly fall of 2026. That's very optimistic. I'm going to say spring or summer of 2027. Sean was asking me this morning how long is construction. I would anticipate construction to be eighteen months on this project.
Mike, I have kind of an off-topic question, but not really. Where are we talking about housing, municipal services, and, um, any other, the-
Yeah.
-video, audio people during the construction phase?
Yeah, you know, I think we don't really have room to house them in as any city-owned building. Sean and I were talking about this this morning too. So we're discussing an off-site location. Might possibly have to rent an office space or a building in the city. We just have not been able to come up with a way to, to have, have them a really nice working space during this time. They won't fit in the community center, but there is some buildings in the city that are available for rent. So I think that's probably going to be the best option.
Are, are they able to share the sheriff station, Municipal Services?
No, we, well, you have to be sworn, you have to go through background so that you cannot use that, they cannot use that station. But staff's going to look at other locations for them. As the council is aware, sometimes it gets a little contentious with our code enforcement. So we need to have a location where it doesn't interrupt current operations of community services. We thought about community development, but there's not enough seats. So it may not be conducive there, so we'll look at our alternatives right now.
It's got to be somewhere that can handle a few animals from time to time as well, I believe.
A bungalow in the parking lot?
You guys kind of work those details out.
But we're definitely thinking about Municipal Services and Cable along the way. And, uh, you know, so I'm anticipating construction about eighteen months, so they could be away from this part of the city for a little while.
Yeah, because I, I believe, Robert, when this was discussed, it was supposed to be finished in 2026, not 2027. So why is it pushed back to the following year, another year?
There's no pushback. I think what you might be thinking of is, uh, the, the state funding needs to be encumbered by 2026.
Completion of this project was to be done in 2026. Now you're saying 2027.
I, I don't remember saying 2026.
It was 2026.
And because, we couldn't because we didn't have the third pot of money at that point. So, uh, we can encumber the state money by March 2026. That'll be easy. The federal money is available till 2031. And I'm just giving you my best estimation when I think the doors will open.
Mayor, Council, that, those are tentative dates. So they may not even make those dates. There's a lot of areas we have to jump through. I'll just share with you, HUD was not easy. We got on the, Michael, Mi- Mr. Estes and Ms. Chavez got on the phone. We had to call Congressman, Congressmember Waters' office for help. They wanted a full-blown EA, Environmental Assessment on the property. So there was, there's a lot of hurdles. We're not, we're trying to push it as fast as we can, but there will be delays. You can count on that. There'll be issues. It's not unusual in construction to run into all kinds of problems. And those are just tentative dates that Mr. Estes pulled out.
And in addition to that, the, uh, the HUD money, we didn't get notified that we were even getting this money until June 2023. And what happens is, they tell you, you get this money, and then you have to wait six months to get the application. So, yeah, we were told we were going to, going to get the money much sooner, but we didn't actually get the money until, uh, June 2023. Now we're really getting the money. So there's a, always a big gap between, hey, you got this money, but you're not able to get it until you do all this stuff. So, uh-
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for the report. I was going to say that, um, I'm excited about this opportunity to, to bring a Youth Development Center, City of Longdale, which is going to serve our youth and probably some of the surrounding youth as well, because they all are one, one group, so to speak, within the South Bay area. Just as a, as a recap, we started this project off with funding for four million dollars from then Assemblywoman Autumn Burke. And then, of course, as they always say, money begats money, right? And so, we were excited when we received, um, the four million dollars from our Congresswoman, Maxine Waters, who's always working on our behalf in Washington, D.C. And that's really put us on a fine footing for, for this project in terms of making it come to fruition. So I want to thank the both of them for their hard work and, and our shared constituency to make this, this happen. You spoke earlier about another pot of money, which was the, the grant, I believe that was from the National Park Service monies. I'm going to suggest that we employ our state representatives. And they can, they always write letters of recommendations for grant opportunities, whether it's the state level or federal level, what have you. So we need to employ them to advocate on our behalf. So maybe that'll make our packet stronger when they see that we have our representatives on federal as well as the state level in support of, of this project. So that, that's something I would, um, suggest that, that we do. But other than that, I'm excited, excited about it, that it's going to happen. Obviously, the, the sooner the better, right? But we know how construction goes. You know, we know how that goes, and we know how grants and opportunities goes in terms of all the, the, um, the Ts you got to cross and dots, Is you got a dot and stuff like that, but we'll make that happen. But I want to thank the staff for their due diligence on, on this project for making it happen.
That's a great idea, Mayor. We can engage the Congresswoman, the Senator, possibly be in the Assembly Member's office as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe the, uh, L.A. County Supervisor.
Whatever levels is appropriate.
Number, number two district, yep.
Yeah, since this is a national park, I assume that's federal?
Yes.
Then, of course, you have the supervisor would, would be appropriate as well then. Okay, with that, that's all I have.
I'll motion to approve item, or, uh, recommendation number one.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Quavis that we approve. Stack recommendation, which was recommendation number one, and seconded by Councilmember Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no with the council, please vote.
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, item ten, concerning Recreation Facility Security Camera Project.
Okay, as you folks know, that we've been working on the Recreation Facility Security Camera Replacement Project. We started this project back in July, and it's moving along. We are ninety-nine point nine percent done, as the staff report says. We just need to install one more camera at Hopper Park. And that could happen this week or no later than next week. I haven't got confirmation from, uh, Blue Violet Networks on when they can get down here and finish that. However, we've ran into a number of challenges. Some of them have been included in the staff report. There's been a number of challenges, some of them related to old park construction. Generally, that is, is the main case. So a number of challenges that has eaten up the contingency amount that was being reserved for a number of other things. Things that we won't be able to get right now, but maybe we'll be able to get later, like cabinets for the, the DVRs, signage, strobe lights for the, the second-level terrace and things like that. About fifteen thousand dollars worth of stuff that we're just not going to be able to get right now. But what I'm coming to you folks for right now is to consider you folks to grant, what is the number here? Three thousand-
Four thirty-three.
Three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars in APRA money, American, American Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, and basically, the money that was allocated to get DVR cabinets. So these are really expensive, really nice DVR cabinets. And what you want to do is when you get these cabinet, when you get the DVRs, you want to protect them. You want to put them in a cabinet with fans. You want to put them in a nice place because it's very expensive equipment. You don't want dust and the elements getting into them and ruining them. So at this point, as I said before, we ran out of money in this project and we need to go other places. I do have nine hundred dollars left in the project budget, which will, which will bridge the gap between the three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and the forty-two hundred, uh, and some change that's going to require to do these. So they have to basically install the cabinets, wire them, put the DVRs inside. It's a considerable amount of work. But, uh, again, the project ran out of money for various reasons, as mentioned in the staff report. And there's just some things, some extras, some non-essentials that we thought we were going to be able to get that we're not going to be able to get for this project unless more money comes about. So, uh, that's, that's the story in a nutshell. If this happens, there'll be no impact to the general fund. Obviously, with, uh, ARPA money, that's not going to affect the general fund. So staff is recommending that the city council approve the use of American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars to be paid to Blue Violet Networks for two DVR, DVR cabinets and related electrical work at Hopper and Rudolph Parks, and the mounting of one, a third DVR at Hogan Park, and necessary electrical work to complete the state-grant-funded Recreation Security Camera Facility, uh, Facility Security Camera Replacement Project. So, uh, that's the staff recommendation. And we wouldn't, we will not be able to do this project any other way unless we use, uh, general fund dollars in something we don't want to do. We always want to use non-city dollars when we have a chance to. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any, um, questions on the report? Discussions on the report? If not, what is the pleasure of this body concerned? Item ten.
I'll make a motion to accept stack recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept staff recommendation and Quavis second it. Any questions on the motion, or debates, discussions? Not, please vote on the motion.
For item number ten, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Item eleven is approve the street sweeping service agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I'll make this as brief as possible, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them after. The, this is to approve the street sweeping services agreement with Clean Street. Clean Street has been providing street cleaning services for the city for the past twenty-two years. We had to go out to RFP twice because we didn't get many proposals. We, we got the Clean Street proposal due to prevailing wages requirements. So when we received Clean Street's agreement or proposal, Grace came up with the great idea to keep cost services down by assuming responsibility of the disposal of the debris by utilizing the Republic Services contract that we have. So we were able to cut the cost by having Clean Street deliver to the Republic Services Transfer Station in Gardena at no charge. So we were able to, um, cut down the cost there. So, um, with that being said, staff recommends approving the agreement with Clean Street for citywide street sweeping services for the period of January 2024 through December 2025 at an annual rate of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, plus four hours of special street sweeping services for the annual parade, which is two hours per year, for a total not to exceed six hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the two-year term of the agreement. Did I say that right? Six hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars for the two-year term of the agreement. Any questions?
Are there any questions on the report? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body?
I'm making the, go stack recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made to approve stack, staff recommendation by Kearney and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? The council, please vote.
For item number eleven, the motion passes unanimously.
Number twelve, professional service agreement extension with De novo Planning Group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a professional service agreement extension for De novo Planning Group, which is our consultant for the general plan. As you may know, in the past few years, due to COVID, we had been delayed to actually complete the project. And then we were delayed by the State of California because of HCD, um, housing requirements for our renumbers. And, um, we just need additional six months. We're requesting additional six months to finalize the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan update and the zoning ordinance. And, uh, we have the, our consultant here, if you have any questions. And staff is also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any discussion on this request? In case, you got any question?
No, I was going to say I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Uh, motion's been made by Suarez that we approve staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and now, with the council, please vote.
For item number twelve, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is item thirteen, annual reorganization of the city council. Recommend the city council appoint one of its members to serve as the mayor pro temp for a term beginning January first, 2024, and ending December thirty-first, 2024. The nominations are now open.
I, I would like to nominate Bernadette Suarez.
I'll second it, but, okay, I'm, I'm second it. I thought she was going to read something, so I guess not.
No, 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 that's it. So the, so the motion's been made by Quavis that, that we appoint Bernadette Suarez, Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez, as the mayor pro temp for the following year, for the next year. And it was seconded by, did you second it?
No, he did, but I wanted to say I accept.
Seconded by, um, by Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? That was your discussion? Okay. We can do this by not, not in consent, we don't have to vote. You want to vote?
I think we got to vote.
Oh, okay.
We're going to vote.
Let's vote.
That's right.
Just in case, just in case we forget.
What she's saying over there, we'll forget.
For item number thirteen, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item is the city manager's report.
Uh, no, uh, no items to report, Mayor and Council.
No items to report, okay. Next item is, um, items from the mayor and city council members' reports.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman.
I would like to speak first as a citizen, if I may.
So, um, this will be, obviously, as, as, on the metro matter. And Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman has done this before, where instead of getting up and going down to the podium at the time for public comment, she does give a public comment, just sitting here. It's still kept to a three-minute limit. You don't need to start the clock if you don't want, but if the clerk's office would at least keep the three-minute limit. And then, um, the council member will then go into her other reports. This, as I say, we've done before, perfectly legal, and, um, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, let's do it.
As a resident in the city of Longdale, I would just like to say, I too, as some of our speakers expressed this evening, were disappointed again in the presentation that we had a great turnout, um, on Saturday for this Holly Mitchell slash Metro presentation. At the first stop in my group, and my group was number two and number four, if anybody wants to know, it was the first opportunity that some people decided, well, we're going to try again to ask questions. And the very next person behind us from the supervisor's office is sitting there saying, come on, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. And I looked and I leaned over my shoulder and said, could you please give us a minute? We have residents that are trying to ask questions that they have waited for years to get answers for. And once again, we didn't get answers. One thing that keeps coming up is voters do not recognize that there is a no-build and a high-frequency bus option through the, our city. And that is not brought up enough because in our group, again, I would say it was forty to sixty percent of the people that were in our group were like, well, I'd rather go with one of those. And so, again, it's, it saddens me that that is not being brought out routinely, that that is possibly an option. that is possibly an option, that we don't necessarily have to do the Hawthorne Boulevard or the Row option. Lawndale has had a thirty-year commit, commitment to the response of, we want no Metro train through our city. And I disagree with some electeds that think that I'm short-sighted for feeling that way. If another city wants it, give it to them. Lawndale doesn't need this, and if you notice, today and this weekend, we had another stabbing that left an individual dead on the Metro train. And on top of that, again, they told us, oh, they're working to remit the noise on this train. No, they're not. Everybody go over to Costco and listen to the sound of these trains. There's no way a resident in Lawndale is not going to hear these trains, regardless of either way that they come. I'm worried about our property values, and now I'll, I see my light, I will get off of, and be respectful of that. Now.
Now, let's hear from, um, Councilwoman.
How she really feels, huh? Okay. Now, on a lighter note, I did attend the employee Christmas party. It was a beautiful, um, e- evening, and, um, I would just like to say thank you to the, the committee that put that on. Nice event, and it was a, a really enjoyable time to be there with our city employees. Um, I also went to coffee with the captain, which was a really nice time, and, um, it was well-attended. So, Michael, thank you to your department for the hard work that you did in making that happen on really such a short turnaround, since we just had a coffee with the cop event. So, I recognize that it was difficult to, to, once again, schedule one, but it was very well-attended and enjoyable. And I did attend, well, that one I can't say, because I did it out as a resident. Also, one other thing, the Santa's sleigh came through our city in the last couple of weeks, and I want to say thank you to all of the organizations that participated, as well as to the South Bay Twenty-Five Club for once again, um, coming through our streets. I had the opportunity to ride on the sleigh for two separate nights, and it's just a joy. It's fun to watch the excitement, it's fun to watch the parents and their excitement, and I'll tell ya, as an oldster here, it's also fun to see those parents reminisce from when they were a kid and come through and sit. And if I heard once, I am not kidding you, I heard thirty times, the biggest joy of that sleigh when I was a child were the great big red suckers. And I heard that over and over and over again. So, again, thank you for that. I think it was great for the city. And if anybody, business or personal, wants to make a donation to make sure it happens again, I'm sure the South Bay Twenty-Five Club would be more than happy to take a donation. That's all I have.
Thank you. Let's hear from Councilman.
I have my list now.
Pat Kearney.
I attended Senator Bradford's Christmas Fair and toy giveaway. I believe Councilwoman Quavis was there, and Councilwoman, uh, what's your name? Bernadette. I also attended a senior lunch featuring the alley cats and second grade singers from Lucille Smith. I believe most of us were there. I did attend the Coffee with the Captain. I was well-received. I missed the dinner because I had a obligation to the man and bread to be out on Santa's sleigh that night. I attended the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee, again, on Monterey Park. I attended the negative, uh, Holly Mitchell Walk. That was all negative to me, I just left. But I did go over to Sheriff's, Toy, uh, Sheriff and Lawndale City Council Toy Giveaway. I loved it there. There were thousands of kids coming there, and they kept bringing toys and toys and toys. And I wanna compliment Sergeant Smith, he brought the water in. And I attended the South Bay Association of, Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation of Officers. I attended with another council member, but I'll let her speak on that. And that's it. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, it's the day after Christmas, Hanukkah. Have I missed something? I know there's a holiday somewhere. No, that's all, that's it.
The winner's closest. What you missed? Okay, let's hear from Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez.
Uh, there is a lot going on. Um, yes, uh, I did attend the Employee Holiday Dinner. Just wanna say thank you to staff. Um, I hope you enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. And hopefully, we can do offsite again, so it feels like you're getting out of work. Um, so, thank you for that. Um, I did attend the, um, South Bay Chamber of Commerce Installation, um, along with Councilmember Kearney. Um, I attended, um, the South Bay Cities Council of Government had a, or I believe it was their, um, no, yes, and Southern California Regional Energy Network and Climate Recognition Program, or no, they had a twenty-twenty-three South Bay Energy and Climate Recognition Program Awards. I attended it along with our Public Works Director. Uh, we did get a bronze award, and I did wanna bring up out of that conversation, and I know Leah probably has more info or remembers better than I the terminology. They brought up, um, some slurry seal that you can use that actually reduces heat, um, and also cool roof, so I, I would like, if, if you have more information or get more information on it, 'cause it also works as a slurry seal for the streets, and, and I know we have some projects coming up on the school properties. Um, that might be something that you spend a little extra, but apparently, it helps with the longevity of the asphalt, and also, if we could look into that. Um, and then, I did attend, um, we did have a steering committee and a board of director meeting, um, all-in-one for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. I will mention that, that COG is going to discuss next month, or next year, in January, whether to take a position. Uh, some cities don't wanna take a position because of the division between the cities. Um, and then, also, I wanted to bring up with this council, just so it's out in the open, they are looking at the dues formula. I plan to sit in on January third. They do want input, 'cause they know that we've brought it up in the past, the amount, so I will sit on that and then bring it forward, so everyone can discuss it. Um, that way, we don't, you know, everyone's in the open about that. Um, and then, uh, see what else. Um, I think I attended some of the ones you mentioned, too. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, I wasn't planning to mention this, but, um, some of you already know, earlier this year, I was diagnosed with cancer. So, um, I got through the worst of it, and so I just wanted to, for those, I know a lot of positive outreach for a lot of people, and I just wanna say thank you, and this year especially during the holidays, you know, everybody's fighting their own battles, so just be extra kind to people this year, and, um, just wanna say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Amen, thank you. Madam Pro Tem.
All right. I attended the Employee Holiday Party. Thank you, staff. It was great. I had fun. You know, we were all a big group, and it, we were not just council and staff, we were just like, we were all friends. So, it felt good to be there. I participated in the Santa's sleigh council night. It was nice to see a lot of our, uh, residents come out with their kids. It was cold, but it seems like they, all the kids enjoyed being around Santa. One stop, uh, was at William Green. They had over eighty-five children. Um, so, it was a great night for us, um, and I liked that our voice car was great on that night. It was Bernadette and myself, we were the voice car. So, we got, we made sure everybody came out on that night. I, um, I attended the League of California Holiday Reception up in, uh, the California Club, very nice venue. Also, I attended the Metro Committee with Supervisor Holly Mitchell. I wanna thank all the residents that came out, um, and voiced their concerns, also those that didn't speak English. There was a tour in Spanish. Um, come to find out that there are more residents that are Hispanic that don't speak English, and they're very concerned with this, 'cause this was the first time they were told of what was going on. So, hopefully, we could have a couple more meetings in Spanish for the sixty percent of residents that we have, uh, Spanish speakers. I wanna thank everybody, and it has been my pleasure being your Mayor Pro Tem for a whole year. Thank you for putting up with me for a year. And last but not least, Happy Holidays to everybody. Have a prosperous New Year and be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. And I enjoyed you as being the Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate you. Okay, so I too attended the Holly Mitchell, Supervisor Holly Mitchell Sea Lion Community Walk. I wanna thank, um, all the community that showed up. Um, I know some people couldn't make it, um, that day. It was on a Saturday, but we did have a good showing, so those who showed up and participated, I wanna thank them, um, and hope that they will share the information with their, um, their neighbors, and so that more people are engaged, um, on this issue. I also attended the seniors, um, lunch holiday, um, party. That was a, that was a blast. I always have fun hanging out with the seniors. I wanna thank the staff for, uh, for putting that together. Um, I also attended, um, at the Laugh, Laugh Factory, a thing called Jingle Jokes and Jams. It's a benefit, um, comedy, um, program for foster youth for, for, um, Christmas and holidays, 'cause we know a lot of foster, um, children, they don't have the same opportunities as, as other childrens. And also, one of the things they do, the, the program was put on by Reach One Teach One Foundation, and what, one of the things they do with foster care is they're, they're concerned with the, the higher rate of high school dropout within foster cares. It's upwards of eighty percent. And a lot of it is because of, uh, sometimes because of the lack of support some of the foster, um, um, youth, um, have, and so I thought it was important, uh, that I attended that. And the comedians was funny as well. So, that was a good program. I attended a Coffee with the Captain. That was a, uh, that was a good program. Thank you, Captain, for, she stepped out. Thank you, Captain, for meeting with the residents and the, um, target shoppers, if you will, that, that was good. Thank you, um, staff for putting that together as well, Mike and his team. Um, I also stopped by briefly at the Sheriff's Department Toy Drive this past Saturday. I attended the Employee Holiday, um, Party. That was really fun, and you're right, it was nice, um, that we were able to, um, dress up and get out. Right? Get out of the community center, right? Kinda like getting out the house, right? And so, that was a good time, just to see everyone having a good time, all the employees there having a good time, and everyone, so that was nice. I also attended with the Pro, Pro Tem, um, the League of Cities Holiday Reception downtown. That was, that was pretty good, um, as well. I'm like, it was pretty good, you know? I was halfway there anyway. Right? Right? Never mind. I do have one comment I wanted to make, uh, Mr. City Manager, that brought, came to our attention during the, um, the Sea Lion Walk. One of the residents has brought up, or someone has brought up, the, the notion of having, this is concerning the freight train, the, um, I guess they have the new silence, or some type of less noise, um, signals that you can install at, um, crawl scenes or what have you, and the, um, the person from, um, from Metro said that the city, basically said that's for the city to make application if you want those, um, devices or what have you. So, if we can look into those.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, Mayor. We can, if you want an item on the agenda, we can bring it back for the council to consider, and then file the application with Bernadette Northern Santa Fe.
I don't know if it's free or what, but we have to.
We can look into it and then bring something for the council for consideration.
Okay, very good. And with that, I think that's all I have. I too wanna wish everyone a happy holiday season, a safe holiday season, and a prosperous and healthy New Year as we go into twenty-two, twenty-four. And with that, we're not done yet. We got some anticipated litigation that we, that we happen to deal with. So, we're gonna have a closed, a closed session, a conference with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. I'm gonna ask the, um, the city attorney to give us the provision of the closed session.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's Government Code five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-two, and we hope to keep it fast for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council was briefed on the one item of potential litigation, but no reportable action was taken tonight. That's my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The regular meeting to be held, scheduled to be held on January first, twenty-twenty-four, was canceled by order of the City Council on October second, twenty-twenty-three. Therefore, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM on Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, in these here council chambers. It is now eight-forty-two, and we are adjourned.